February 21st, 22, 2022. All the twos are causing me problems. February 21st, 2022, Stanley County Board of Commissioners. Thank you guys for coming. I'd like to ask Commissioner Mike Barbie to do the indication and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I had been promised to bless all those who attended tonight. Please look over the commissioners as we give you this as the county. We would like to ask you to bless our troops overseas and bring peace to the country. We thank this in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The blessings to the life of the United States of America through the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie. We don't have a huge agenda tonight, but we do have a full one. Yes, sir, Commissioner Efer.
I would like to make some adjustments to the agenda.
Okay.
All right. Here we go. Bear with me. The enhanced voluntary district, which is number two on our list, I'd like to make it number one.
Okay.
The NC 911, be item number two. Consolidated Health and Human Services Board appointment will be number three. The Stanley County Uniform Guidance Cost Principles, number four. Liberty Hill Pump Station, number five. Five B, I would like to add a resolution for that pump station. Number six would be the COVID-19 update. Number seven would be public, no, wait a minute. Number seven would be the board discussion related to COVID-19. And number eight would be public comment. And number nine be the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Efer. I am not going to attempt to repeat what he just said. Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Furr, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So we move public comments down to number eight, just so the public knows that was not to make them less important, but there are two presentations tonight, and I thought was in case there's any follow-up, it may preempt some questions, or it may answer some questions, or it may give people some more information to think on. So the idea was to put it behind the presentations. There's not going to be anything to vote on tonight that has any public comment signed up, so there shouldn't be anybody that feels left out because of that. Having said that, I guess we move on with agenda item number one now, the voluntary ag district. Presenter Molly Alexia, County Extension Director. Thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Molly.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Molly Alexia, the County Extension Director, and this is Amanda Kirby, the Soil and Water Conservation Director. And we've been working with our ag board, and in January, we had an application from Courtney Swain for the enhanced volunteer application. And the board reviewed it and is making a recommendation for the commissioners to approve that. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
This is the enhanced voluntary ag district for Sunny Oaks Farms.
That's correct.
Any questions from commissioners? Ms. Alexia?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
Motion to approve by Vice Chairman Almond, second by Commissioner Barbie. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Alexia.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item on the agenda is the 911 board grant. That's going to be Mr. Kyle Griffin. Should have known you didn't just come to this meeting just to see this exciting presentation.
I know. Good evening to Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. As you're aware, we have several large projects on the horizon for the public safety departments in the county, one of which being the new 911 center, the second of which is the replacement of our 20-plus-year-old public safety data system that consists of the computer-aided dispatch system, the jail management system, and the law enforcement records management system. This system was put in in 1998. We would like to secure state 911 board grant funding to assist in offsetting the cost of these projects. To do this, we feel it is best to contract with mission-critical partners to complete the grant application, as it is quite extensive. They've proven to be very successful across the state. I ask tonight for your consideration in appropriating funds to secure the services of MCP and to author our staff to execute a contract with mission-critical based on the scope of work that is in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. I have a question. I recall briefly discussing this in the Commissioners Retreat the other day. I think that total cost is 2.5 million?
For which project? The CAD?
The CAD.
Yes, it'll be roughly that. We've got two vendors we're working with to finalize quick.
That's the estimated total cost?
Yeah.
This grant will offset some of that?
Yes, as well as the potentially for the new building. So we want to submit a comprehensive grant to the state board for the replacement of the software as well as the infrastructure.
What's the infrastructure part of it?
The facility side.
I mean, how much?
It will submit, that's something MCP will help us with.
Okay.
I'm determining the quote that we're asking from them.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appropriate funds in the amount of $34,905 to secure assistance in preparing documentation for the 2022 North Carolina 911 board grant process and also authorize staff to execute a contract with mission-critical partners based on the detached scope of work.
Motion to approve and execute the contract from Commissioner, sorry, from Vice Chairman Almond. We have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Lohhan. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank y'all.
Here's seven to zero. Thank you, Kyle. Next one, our new modified agenda. I'm trying to keep track of my notes here. Consolidated Human Services Agency Board Appointment. Have I got that right? Yes. Presenter Director David Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman Jordan, and Commissioners, good evening. I have a recommendation from our Health and Human Services Board for a Mr. Stan Leggett for a consumer position on our Health and Human Services Board. Mr. Leggett is a retired independent pharmacist for over 30 years here in Stanley County. Previously served on this board. He was in the U.S. Navy, North Carolina Army National Guard. Holds a BS in Pharmacy from South Carolina, also University of North Carolina Pembroke, Massey Business College in Jacksonville. And this was a recommendation from our Health and Human Services Board looking for your approval this evening.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Fellow Commissioners, you have the request from the Board of Human Services. You've also got the other information in your packet. We have any discussion, or we have any nominations?
I make a motion, we nominate Mr. Stan Leggett to the vacant Consumer of Human Services Board position for a four-year term.
We have a nomination for Stan Leggett by Commissioner Shudo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Furr. No other nominations? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor for appointing Mr. Stan Leggett to fill that vacancy, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Director Jenkins. Next, I believe, is now the Stanley County Uniform Guidance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Per the American Rescue Plan Act, those are the funding we'll receive for many of the infrastructure projects we talked about. It's probably been a couple of months ago, water, sewer, broadband, through that American Rescue Plan Act. Per that guidance from the U.S. Treasury, we need to have a uniform guidance cost policies principle or principles policy, and that's also per the North Carolina School of Government. And so you have that in your packet. Basically, this looks at what's allowable, what are allowable costs, what aren't allowable costs, and determining what's direct cost versus indirect cost to be able to assign to the grant in terms of what's allowable. And so this policy basically just outlines this so that we can be in compliance with the U.S. Treasury for any auditing that may occur. And we will, there are additional policies that will be required with these funds, and the school government's currently working on those templates. And so over the next couple of months, we'll be bringing additional policies related to the American Rescue Plan Act forward for your approval and consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments from the board? Questions for the County Manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Efer?
County Manager Lucas, just to make sure, this is just basically the American Rescue money that's infrastructure, it's got nothing to do with COVID.
Well, this is just the American Rescue Plan Act.
Right.
You know, there's four pots of things you could potentially do with it. If you recall, I did a presentation before you, it's probably been a couple of months ago, and it was staff's recommendations to put that, those dollars, it's about 12.2 million dollars towards the expansion of water lines, which at your retreat on Friday, you prioritized two projects, $4 million for an extension of water lines in the county, funding towards your wastewater treatment, the wastewater treatment plant in West Stanley, the expansion of that, and some other potential infrastructure projects, water and sewer related at the airport, as well as broadband and broadband expansion.
Thanks, sir. Any more questions for County Manager Lucas?
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chairman Almond?
Make a motion to adopt the uniform guidance cost principles policy.
We have a motion from Vice Chairman Almond. We have a second. Second from Commissioner Efer. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, County Manager Lucas. Next item on our agenda, our modified agenda is going to be the Liberty Hill Pump Station Replacement Financing Public Hearing. And according to our modified agenda, there's going to be both a public hearing and the added resolution that Commissioner Efer added. At this time, we have had a request from Commissioner Lohhan to recuse himself. May I get a motion from another Commissioner to refuse Commissioner Lohhan?
Mr. Lohhan to recuse himself.
We have a motion for accusers by Commissioner Shudo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Furr. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Lohhan, your excuse in this particular agenda item. The presenter on this agenda item is County Manager Lucas.
Yes, sir. As you recall, last meeting, you all approved a resolution for us to move forward with an application to the local government commission for this financing. And you also, based on the bids we received from local financial institutions, authorized us to begin the process of working with U.A.R.E. Bank on a installment financing contract. Per North Carolina General Statute 160A20, a public hearing is required prior to moving forward with this financing. And so we're asking, that ran in the February 8th edition of the SNAP, and so we're asking this evening for the board to hold that public hearing regarding that financing. That financing is needed. We, that pump station's integral to providing water to the western part of the county, and so as the western part of the county has grown, there's a need for us to enhance our pumping ability. And as we've seen, additional economic development in the western part of the county, this pump station's integral to making sure that we can meet those needs. And so I'll be happy to answer any questions, but you'll hold the public hearing, and then we'll ask for your consideration of the resolution that you have before you this evening.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. I do not see anybody signed up for public comment to necessarily speak on this particular item, so I'm going to bear the public hearing open. Is there anyone here would like to speak for or against this particular issue? Anyone for or against on this one particular issue, the Liberty Hill Pump? Seeing none, I'll call the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Efer.
I'd like to make a motion, we authorize staff to work with U.A.R.E. Bank to finalize the financing for the Liberty Hill Pump Station replacement.
Motion to move forward to authorize staff by Commissioner Efer. Second by?
Second.
By Vice Chairman Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Yes, sir.
We also need to take action on that resolution.
Thank you.
So it'd be six.
I'm sorry.
Also need to take action, specific action on that resolution, that installment financing resolution that's before you this evening.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Yes, so that needs to be a separate motion.
Yes, please.
To approve the financing resolution, correct?
That's correct.
With U.A.R.E. Bank. Can I get a motion to approve the financing resolution?
No move.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Almond. Second by Commissioner Efer. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also passes, six to zero. Welcome back to the meeting, Commissioner Lohhan. Our next presentation, well, we're burned through these right now. Don't worry, it's about to get slow. Our next presentation is the COVID-19 update from Health Director David Jenkins. Come on up, sir.
Hello again, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm not sure if all of you can see this presentation, I know it's showing up on some of your screens. Fortunately, I apologize for the group here, we're not able to show all this information, but I'll try to share what I can and go through this fairly quickly. So just to begin with, we're starting with the total positive daily cases by date. This is pulled directly from the state website. Obviously, you can see that our numbers have decreased significantly on our cases, which is a great direction to be trending in, is what we've been wanting to see for a while with this latest variant, Omicron variant. Our next slide is our COVID daily hospitalizations. We're actually trending down significantly there as well. Our hospitalizations were fairly high, as you can see, at the end of January, but now we've continued to trend downwards with those numbers. Our daily COVID deaths by date have also significantly trended down. I know there was a question about when we had the, we experienced most of our deaths in Stanley County. It trended very much like it does with the state totals for deaths. If you can, as you can see, probably around December of 2020 into the first of 2021, we had our, with the original variant of COVID, we actually had our largest amount of deaths. Then we saw the Delta spike in the fall of 2021, and as we get into 2022, we had our vaccinations, the first of 2021, and then we had our spike of Delta, as I mentioned, in the fall, and then we had our latest spike of Omicron, which occurred at the first of the first of this year. And now we're trending on the other side of that, and that matches up with the different waves that we've seen with COVID. And here's our latest graph for Stanley County COVID-19 cases, and we're matching well with the state as far as our trends are concerned, with weekly cases and percent positivity. And that was through February 12th. So it's good to see those numbers improve. There's our latest COVID-19 data as of Friday. Our hospitalizations Friday were at 19, our deaths were at 263, total cases at 19,167. Our percent positivity continues to trend down at 18.2%. Breakthrough cases are at 2,822, breakthrough deaths with 22. We're currently one dose of vaccinations at 47%, with the state average at 65%. Two doses, or one J&amp;J at 44%, with the state average at 61%. I was asked to actually pull some numbers for COVID deaths based on age and vaccine status, and I'll go ahead and kind of go through all these for the good of those in the audience there. For ages 30 to 39, we had one death. Obviously, that individual was not vaccinated, unfortunately. 40 to 49, we had 13 deaths. No one there that died in that age range were vaccinated. 50 to 59, we had 27 deaths. No one in that age range was vaccinated. 60 to 69, we had 47 deaths. One of those were vaccinated. 70 to 79, 64 deaths, eight were vaccinated. 80 to 89, had 70 deaths in that age range. Seven were vaccinated. 90 years up, 41 deaths, number of vaccinated that died were six. So we've had, out of 263 deaths, unfortunate deaths, we've had 22 that were vaccinated. Was any questions about that particular slide? Very good. So I want to discuss a little bit about moving to mask optional. Last week, DHHS announced as of March 7th, for schools in low-risk settings, for the general public, to still promote vaccines for school-aged children. Obviously, that's a local school board decision. Our schools went ahead, like many school districts, and moved forward with mask optional as of the Monday following that announcement, as of today, actually. Landscape has changed quite a bit with this pandemic from two years ago and even two months ago. A lot of this shift from mandatory requirements, gone from mandatory requirements to educating the public so they can best protect themselves based on their risk category. So some of the metrics for this decision were vaccines and PPE are readily available. Hospitalizations, emergency department visits due to COVID have decreased significantly. Positive cases have decreased. More immunity in the community, whether it's natural from being infected or vaccinated. Weaker variant is now dominant with the Omicron variant, and our overall disease burden has decreased throughout the state. So it's good to see that we're moving in that direction, positive direction. Any specific questions on that slide?
Can you go back to that for one moment, Director?
Yes, sir.
If I, if I understand in that, just say that again in my own words, you know, it's not that COVID might not still be bad, it's just that it's, we're getting to the point that it's no worse than anything else, so it's manageable. If you happen to have COVID bad and you need a hospital, there's a bed for you, there's a ventilator for you, the resources aren't stressed, so there's no need to necessarily maintain that vigilance. Am I understanding that right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Director.
And just a general reminder, we still offer vaccines on Mondays for children 5 to 11, Moderna 18-over on Tuesdays, and Pfizer from 12 over on Wednesdays. Commissioner, if I may, I had a few comments I wanted to add as part of this presentation and discussing with my board chair. We've had an opportunity to listen to a lot of public comments that have been made throughout the pandemic, and they've been quite disheartening and concerning from a public health standpoint. I feel like we've almost eroded a little bit of public trust in our local Board of Health, Position of Health Director, and our Health Department. So I did want to provide, attempt to provide a little bit of clarification where local public health laws and authority is derived, if I can. So just briefly, a lot of our longstanding communicable disease laws were not created locally, but enforced locally through legal authority of the North Carolina Commission for Public Health, as outlined in 138 of the general statutes. Local Health Department must follow federal state rules, which we are closely scrutinized and held liable for any actions or inactions. These rules are in place to protect the Health Department and the county to ensure we're fulfilling our legal responsibilities to the community. In order to change state public health laws and authority, concerns would need to be directed to our state legislators with the General Assembly, who authorizes and directs the Commission for Public Health as a public health rulemaking body for North Carolina. Again, I want to emphasize that North Carolina public health laws are not created locally, but are enforced locally. Local officials, whether elected or appointed, have very limited influence on how these laws are administered. What influences they do have is typically more restricted than state guidelines. As a local health director, I'll be more than happy to discuss at length with anyone the requirements and responsibilities as our limited local public health rulemaking authority. If I cannot provide the information that anyone asks of, I'll certainly put them in touch with someone at the state level that can answer their questions. Finally, I want to say publicly that our Health and Human Services Board and I are very pleased with the efforts of many of our volunteers, school nurses and staff, and our local emergency management and public health department staff who have worked diligently outside in adverse conditions, hot, cold, full PPE, to provide information, guidance, testing, and vaccines necessary to protect this community from COVID-19 throughout the pandemic. I can assure you, we have done so with the utmost honesty, integrity, and compassion. We look forward to getting back to addressing other public health issues in the community other than COVID-19. And I just want to thank you for your time. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Appreciate your time, Director Jenkins. And I would ask tonight, will you stay around for a bit, because just in case for the next couple of things, if anybody's got questions, I can use your resource.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment?
By all means, yes, sir.
I just wanted to commend you and all the Public Health Department employees and the Health Board for what y'all have been going through for the last two years, because information changes, you get more data, you got to react to it. I appreciate everything y'all have done. And I just, the biggest thing I can't understand, when you present facts to the public, like the one fact you said of the 263 people who passed away from COVID, 22 have been vaccinated, and that meant these 200 and some have not been vaccinated. And I don't see how anyone can come up and say that vaccines don't work. I mean, you're the local Health Department. Y'all are our neighbors that are putting this information together to try to help us. I'm also a vaccine ambassador for Atrium Health, and the statistics they send out pretty much mirror what you're doing. You know, the numbers that you come out, but there's just on a higher scale in the region, and of the people ending up in the hospital, how many of those are vaccinated and non-vaccinated? And I just cannot grasp why people don't understand that, and they make comments like vaccines don't work, vaccines are killing people. You know, back when I was younger, I used to deliver the Sebring News down in Sebring. And I remember on the Saturday nights, we'd do the Sunday edition from like 12:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. And then back then, you would hear stuff on the radio, you know, like 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, you'd listen to that on AM radio, that's about all you could get. And it was usually a guy talking about governments, conspiracies, and stuff like that one Sunday. The next Sunday, he'd be talking about aliens over in New Mexico. You know, then you would see stuff like that when you went to, you know, like on the top of newspaper racks, you see these conspiracy things and stuff. And unfortunately, now there's just so many ways to get information out there that people could look at that as fact and truth. And what I like about the information you get, your stuff, the stuff that, while I try to trust, I trust the information you give us and the information that I get from Atrium Health, is that stuff has been vetted pretty much all the way down the line. Plus, the statistics you guys are giving us about people in the hospital and people with deaths, that's our local neighbors that are dying. And I still think back to the summertime, the time that we should have got more aggressive about masking up and getting vaccines and social distancing was in the summertime when the rates were down to 1.7% positivity, and they started to climb. You know, we tend to wait too long, then it's almost too late to do that. And I hope this new variant coming out is not going to be a bad one, and I hope this becomes an endemic instead of a pandemic. But I just want to thank you very much, and thank you, Debbie, and thank you all in the Health Department for what you guys have done, and you guys that serve on the Health Board. I really do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jenkins, I do have two questions.
Yes, sir.
And you may not know this, or you may, if someone's admitted to the hospital, are they automatically given a COVID test?
That had been the practice, I don't know. Now, I mean, everybody that I'm aware of, but I would need to get back with you on that to be sure that's practices for.
But it used to be, has been. Second part of the question, if somebody's in an auto accident, seriously injured, goes to the hospital, let's assume they're tested for COVID, test comes back positive, they die because of the injuries, are they classified as a COVID death?
No, sir, because a medical examiner would look at that information as a professional and determine that wasn't cause of death. They can make that determination if they had underlying conditions and the COVID actually caused them to progress so that they could not, no longer survive. So that determination was made by those professionals in that instance. Medical examiner, coroner who's involved? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
As aside into that comment, I think that's, I mean, that's going to be up to the, I don't know, how many there are, how many corners do we have in America? 30,000, 50,000? There's got to be a bunch of them, but I mean, each one of them, it could be 5,000 probably, but each one of them performs their own, their own autopsies, their own studies.
They're the medical professionals in their setting.
Right. So I mean, how many? Right, so I mean, how many corners are in North Carolina, you know?
I do not know it offhand, no, sir.
But there's got to be a few, probably a few thousand countrywide. So I mean, you know, they all, it depends on what that coroner puts down, you know, that's.
And I'm sure they have access to all their medical records so they can make those determinations.
I mean, I'm speaking for Stanley, but.
Yes, sir.
All right, cool, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Further questions for Director Jenkins on that agenda item? Thank you, Director, thank you fellow commissioners. If you will indulge your chairman, I am going to pass the gavel over to my vice chairman to chair the next item, because I want to participate in that item and give a preparation myself. So I'm going to hush until he tells me otherwise.
Next item on the agenda is board discussion related to public COVID-19 inquiries. I would just respectfully ask Commissioner Jordan that you limit it to five minutes. A few months ago, we limited Commissioner Shudo on the same topic to five minutes, and I also respectfully ask that you do the same. Thank you.
He was going to let me. I asked him if he was going to. It just means I'm going to have to read fast. I want to thank all the folks that have emailed and called us commissioners throughout the last, I'm going to say month or so. There's, you know, quite a few people out there that have been concerned, that have had serious questions, and it has challenged us to find answers. Not that your commissioners don't care, but they just can't know everything. So some of these people here in this room have asked questions that we got to go spend two days digging, and then we get the answer, we come back. So thank you for doing that. It makes us better. As a direct result of the huge amount of communication that has come in via phone calls and email, I think I've personally learned more about what this board can and can't do than I ever did in any county commissioners conference or legislature that I've attended. We receive questions that we've never been asked before, we've got challenges a local board like this has never had to face, and we learn. We've learned a lot. We've learned what we can do, we've learned what we can't do, and if we're diligent about researching it, we learn the why behind the what we can and can't do. Lately, what's come up a lot is the mission statement for Stanley County. It comes up a lot as the thing that gets quoted at a commissioner or at a board, and it reads as follows, "With visionary leadership and professional staff, work to ensure overall public safety, protect and promote health and well-being, effectively carry out the services mandated by state statutes, grow the economy, encourage the education, enhance the quality of life for all." I'll be honest, I didn't write it. I also didn't analyze it for statutory purposes when looking at it. It's a, it's a mission statement that pops up on the website, it looks good, sounds good, I voted for it. I continue to vote for it every year. But if I did write it, knowing what I know now, I might suggest it be changed a little bit. "With visionary leadership and professional staff, work to support overall public safety, support the protection and promotion of health and well-being, and effectively carry out the services mandated by state statutes," and the continued rest. I say that because people got, people are under the impression that because they read it there in two sentences of marketing, that we have a certain power to do things that we don't. Regardless of what the mission statement says, our role as a board is defined in statute, not in the mission statement, and when the two appear to conflict, we are still governed by the statutes. Before COVID hit, during my brief time serving this county, I never recalled the mission statement coming into question. It was not until after the pandemic that people started to look at the county commissioners for public health guidance and started kind of picking out key words to use as leverage. And don't get me wrong, I think within the guidelines of what we have the authority to do, we overwhelmingly appreciate and enjoy being able to find ways to support the county's ideals, because those ideals are different than any other county. We're not Mecklenburg, and we don't do things that we don't want to, and we're not wake, and we don't want to do things the way they do. If I wanted to live in those counties, I'd have moved there. I love Stanley. I moved here, and I'm shy of winning the lottery and getting some cool place in like Boca, I'm never leaving. Many commissions throughout this state and others have taken stances on COVID-related issues that may or may not be within their statutory authority, and it makes for great soundbites on local news, and it makes for great headlines. But statutorily, it often means nothing. It drives votes and it drives praise, it's not drive change. Our board has certain duties, and, you know, we set tax rates, we rezone properties, we approve zoning requests, we do things related to the economic future of Stanley County and the growth plan and maintaining the infrastructure for ourselves, our kids, our grandkids. That's what the Board of Commission is designed to do, okay? It's not designed to fulfill some of the requests that we've been asked this year. Other departments, you know, our board supports them, but we don't direct them, and we can't change that. We are never going to have the authority to direct law enforcement, we are never going to have the authority to direct public health unless we entirely disband the Board of Health and take that position upon ourselves, which I really don't ever want to do. Those aren't things that we do. So I want to clarify for the sake of the public, some of the things that we've been asked, because now the public is starting to repeat itself, different people are asking us commissioners the same questions, and I've answered these to people via email, but I want to take just a few moments and kick them out to people publicly so you can refer back to this. Instead of answering you in five pages, I can just say, come here and play this video. Directing the Health Department to perform certain tasks, our board was asked by a few people in the audience one night to please direct the Health Department to do something. All right, okay, so we stopped to ask, can we do that? Any normal resolution passed by the Board of Commissioners affects our entire county. But specifically, in case you guys are not aware, it affects only the county, it does not affect municipalities. We have a resolution for a firearm ordinance, it has no bearing on Oakboro, Albemarle, Stanfield. They have their own councils. They're not subject to our authority. We basically enact things outside the jurisdictions of all the other municipalities. The Board of Health, due to its nature and statutory design, doesn't work that way. If the public health directors from the Board of Health and the Health Director affect the entire county as well as all the municipalities, you can cut me off, but I'm about halfway through. Well, you surpassed five minutes. Okay, well, I'll quit and find.
Is there any more discussion or debate on the item?
I will try to do that, I don't know, do it on Facebook, I'll do it somewhere later tonight, but I won't tie up the board's time with it if they don't want to. Thank you, Vice Chairman, temporary chairman. That was it. So moving on to item number nine, then, that's going to be consent agenda. I'm sorry, my apologies. Moving on to item number eight, you threw me off there. That's going to be public comments. We have nobody currently signed up for public comments to speak tonight, which is a rare area to do, so I'll ask, is there anyone out there that wants to speak tonight during public comments? See none. Move on to the next item, the next item is our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve consent agenda.
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lawhorn, second by Commissioner Shudo. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven, yeah, seven to zero. Anything else? Board comments, yep. I think I started that way last time.
The last meeting, we had a proclamation for B.J. Hill and the Cincinnati Bengals. Everybody in here, I'm sure, watched the game. If they didn't, they know the results. We fell short by three points, I believe, but B.J. Hill made Stanley County very proud of his accomplishments, and it's like his mother said, "B.J. Hill and the support that he received drew our community together." And I can tell you, if you don't realize it, we've got a community that is split pretty close, 50 to 50, or at least 47 to 53. And we need more things that are positive, like B.J. Hill and the Cincinnati Bengals situation. We need to look at each other as neighbors, and I don't know, there's several things that come to my mind, and I know, first of all, we need to seek God's will, or God in our life. The second thing we need to do is we need to love our neighbor as we love ourself, and there's a lot of that that needs to take place. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Almond.
Quick remark, just like to thank fellow commissioners who came out to the dog food drive two Saturdays ago. Great event, thank y'all.
Commissioner Shudo.
Hey, just want to give a quick shout out to James Shue from West Stanley. He won the indoor state title, I forget what distance it was, but kudos to him. I remember watching him run from his middle school days, and he was out front all the time, so I don't know if y'all know much about indoor track, but that track is pretty small, you have to run around it quite a few times to get where you're going. But congratulations to James Shue, state champ.
Thank you, Commissioner Shudo. Commissioner Bartabe.
I'd just like to do what Commissioner Lawhorn said, B.J. Hill, he did bring the community together, and he said he was proud of our community, we're proud of him too.
Thank you, sir. We do have a town hall meeting tomorrow night at Millenport at 6:30 over at Cell Towers. If anyone's interested in giving their input on some of the things we're doing to rewrite our ordinance for Cell Towers, you're more than welcome to come. And County Manager Lucas, Brian's retirement thing is this week?
Right.
Right yet?
I believe it's 2:30 it starts.
2:30, and it's in here?
It is in this room.
Okay. Thanks, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert, my comments, I won't cheat and finish my comment sheet, all right? I reserve that. I'll. Well, hey, you know what? So y'all know, I don't call y'all, I don't cut you off, you saw that, right? So what's good for the goose is good for the gatter. He cut me off, too. I will, I will make my comment, I'll tell you what, I'll use my comment time to say, I'll try to do a live stream tonight on my commissioner's page, and I'll put my comments there where I can read it without Zach banging a hammer at me. He might want to throw one at me, but I do appreciate my board's patience, and I do appreciate sincerely all the people in the community, whether you agree with my view or not, or our board's view or not, taking time to ask questions. We sincerely appreciate it. I will address the rest of stuff later on tonight. If that's all the comments, I'll seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Almond, second by Commissioner Shudo. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.